If we could have a roll call.
Mr. Holden.
Present.
Mrs. Gatos.
Here.
Mr. DiWello.
Here.
Mr. Gunkalves.
Excused.
Mrs. Kilmartin.
Here.
Mrs. Kuta.
Here.
Mr. Manotti.
Here.
Dr. Ritter is excused.
Excused.
And Mrs. Yolesh.
Here.
Okay. If we could all please rise and salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. This time I obtain a motion to approve the agenda. Snowman, if you're ready.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Sensing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Discussion and possible vote on budget adjustments and items for consideration include transportation for Talented and Gifted program and the pay to participate plan. Okay. Can we, Chris?
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, we continue to be in the, what we hope are the final stages of negotiations with the city regarding bus, the bus contract. There are still some unresolved small issues, but important issues, including use of the parking lot and that sort of thing. We were hoping to have a signed contract available today so that you could be asked to vote on having some extra money in the budget today. I would ask that you consider the possibility of voting on a contingency basis, contingent upon the contract being settled, that we would be able to do some of these things. As you can see, it's not as much money as we had hoped for. Part of the reason for that, of course, is that we had to spend money with Durham to run summer school using their buses, and that was quite an expense. And I know everyone is aware of the details that led to that situation. With that said, it's my recommendation to the board that we, based on the strong likelihood, and make it a contingent vote, if you're so inclined, to allow us to take back our proposal for pay to participate. I know that we all agree, I think we all agreed, no one was happy with that, and this would allow us to not have to charge parents. And also, Ed Drap, our finance director, did discover and apply for, and it looks like we will get a grant that will partially fund some of the Magnet School transportation. He's talked to a couple of the parents that have been involved with that issue today on the phone, and there appears to be an interest, since we, since, as you know, we're not obliged to provide that transportation, but it is a good thing for kids, so both of those things are true, that with the money that would come in through the grant and then asking parents to pay for part of the transportation costs over the course of the year, we'd be able to provide full transportation for those two programs. So those are, those are my recommendations to the board.
Okay. Could I?
Please, yeah.
Okay. I see in, after these actions, there might be a remaining balance. And of course, I know we've all gotten emails from parents of the preschoolers, and I, I think it would, if we could possibly find the monies to provide them, if we're going to phase out a program, then in all, I mean, in all fairness, we should give the preschool parents adequate time to find the right place for their child to go to. And of course, we, this was given to us in June, and we decided on this in June, and it really didn't allow them much time. So I'm, I'm hoping, if anything, we need to come up with a plan while we're, while we're required to give services to the special needs students.
Yes.
I understand that, but we're not required to give a total preschool program, per se. If we're going to eliminate it, then I think it needs to be phased out, and I think we should try to fund it this year, and then next year, the three-year-olds go into the four-year class, four-year-old class, and then phase it out, if that's what we have to do.
I, I had had a similar proposal that I had sent to both Chris and Mark with the idea of grandfathering in children that were already in the program, which would be less cost than the whole program. But just particularly, we had that one letter from the very large family, and she went into the program thinking, you know, she was set.
Plus, plus there, I received from a couple of parents who had two children in the program. So that's double the amount of money. But I'm just thinking that if we're going to do this, then, and with the other stipulation that we don't take any new, in other words, new students in to move up, pay for the ones that are there, with the understanding that after the three-year-olds move into the four-year program, four-year-old program, if we have to eliminate it, then we only provide the services that the special needs students, you know.
Well, we have to provide the regular ed peers, don't we?
We have to make it available for regular ed peers, yes, as part of the design.
Right.
But they can be charged.
But it's the transportation. But they can be charged.
As they are in most districts. I would offer for your consideration, it's not really a counterproposal, but along the lines of what you have both proposed, that we, that we, one, consider grandfathering in the students that are already in the program, that have already made their plans and are now going into the second phase, but that we wait until next week's Finance Committee meeting to make a final decision on that piece of it. I would recommend that we do the other things tonight, but that the, but that that wait until next week. And I say that because there's some unknown aspect of how the cost for the propane is going to be covered. Obviously, Durham will use the propane that the city has. There's a charge for that. Typically, the Board of Education each year, as many of you know, has paid $120,000 towards that. That has suddenly become less clear, and I would welcome an opportunity to, between now and next week at the Finance Committee meeting, explore that a little more. I'm hoping that anyone who has an opportunity to speak with leadership of City Hall would say that the status quo would be the way to go.
So let's make a deal.
So.
I'll be, I'll be happy to call.
I think it would be fair, because we're not asking for more than we've gotten in the past, but certainly not less.
Well, because I was told by the parent, I mean, I received several, several calls while I was away, and the parents said that they were told that they should call me from leadership. And I said, well, I don't have a magic wand, but if I won Powerball, I'd certainly be able to help you. So I'm just hoping that maybe if we could get a little give and take here, I just don't, I just think it's unfair to have these parents have to face, and most of the, most of the preschool programs for the time slots these parents might want.
Are full.
Are full.
Yeah.
Thank you for considering.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm sitting here, and we're talking numbers, which we don't know how much we're going to save, how much we're going to have available, because there's no agreement yet. We're talking about, well, we'll do this with this and this with that. We don't have firm numbers. We don't have firm numbers for what Kathy and Kate were talking about, what those costs are sitting in front of us. How are we supposed to make decisions if we don't have dollars and actual costs in front of us? We're going to say, well, it's contingent upon, you know, we shouldn't be voting until we have firm, hard numbers that we know we're voting on.
Could, could we, could we get those numbers for finance, possibly?
We hope to have them by finance, but the thing is, the full board needs to take action on this. And by the time of our next meeting, people would be starting to make payments for pay to participate. So by doing a contingency vote today, it does a couple of things. One, it lets the parents know that we are listening and we are trying to do something for them. Two, it might put a little bit of pressure on people who are negotiating for buses to understand that we have a good place to use that money that they like. Okay? I think if we do it with a contingency basis, we're safe. But the only one that we're currently talking about that really impacts our budget is the pay to participate.
Why is pay to participate more important than, than the kids doing the Talented and Gifted, that their parents should, should pay for transportation, but to participate in sports or other extracurriculars, they don't have to pay? Why is that more important?
Well.
Or is it consistent that sports are the, are the, are the king of the hill in shelter schools?
Well, it's not, as you know, Mr. DiWello, it's not only sports. So pay to participate is not just about sports.
I understand that, Chris, but we're making a decision that pay to participate is more important than the, than the parents who have to pay their, so their kids can go to an educational program, that's not as important. They have to pay.
I'm not sure it comes down to what's important and what's less, more important, less important, so much as it comes down to how many kids are we impacting with this sort of thing? We're talking about hundreds and hundreds of kids affected by the pay to participate. What are we talking about, what? Twenty?
But is there, but, but is that less value?
It's not about what's more valuable and less valuable. If we have the funding to do both, we should do both. It would be nice if the city could see its way to giving us that extra $600,000 in ECS that they're holding on to, and then we could just, you know, put all in what like.
Which clearly, we can't afford to do everything we'd like to.
Correct.
I think all of you know that.
Right, but I think our goal should be impact.
Yeah.
And certainly, with additional funds that may be freed up, I would want to skew them entirely to academics. While some academics are involved in the pay to participate, I am a firm believer that we are the Board of Education, not the Board of Sports and Athletics. But, you know, it's something that has an earlier deadline for us.
Well, we can always refund the money. If they've, if they have paid, we put it into an escrow account, and it sits there, and then we, and then we send, and then we give the money back. We got it.
But if they don't have the money, and their kid can't join the team because of that.
But we have a contingency for that. We, the superintendent has some funds that he can use at his discretion, based on family need, to take care of that. We don't want to shut, shut a child out because they can't afford it.
Well, as you recall, the, in the proposal for pay to participate, it does, it's sliding scale, so that children that are suffering from poverty, essentially, would not be negatively impacted. Easy for me to say, and I mean it, but you know that sometimes children that are in that situation will, will just quietly not ask for the special consideration, and that's, that's the unfairness of it. Look, there's a lot of unfairness. I know I'm on record of saying, you know, I think we're as a district underfunded, and it means difficult decisions. But I think that this is a reasonable, albeit partway, towards helping families to get ready for the school year with bus transportation in place, sports, which I do believe are part of education. We can disagree on that, but I think it's, it's an aspect of, of well-rounded education, and working with parents of the Talented and Gifted programs to be able to get the transportation they need and have asked for.
And I hear what you're saying, Dave. I would love to have firm, exact numbers. I don't think we can let the perfect get in the way of the good.
Yeah.
Right? It's not going to be perfect tonight. We can make a contingency for that. We can put that into whatever we vote on, that it's open to change. We reserve the right to change based on what funding actually comes available. But if it serves a greater good to make a, to do a vote tonight, then that should, should be our priority.
Anyone else have thoughts? Okay. Sensing that we are ready to vote, actually, we need a motion on the table.
So, so just for clarification, so the vote would be for the, what's listed here under budget implications, and the remaining $193,000, whatever, $1,000, to be allocated, determined at another point?
Yes, yes.
And that could include the pre-K at that point?
And that would, and that would be my recommendation to you, that that be a priority when we have that discussion at Finance.
Do we have any idea what the liability is for us to Durham? Because they are obviously, they have expended money to bring buses here and set up, it is a three-year contract, now it's a one-year contract. Do we have any idea what their lawsuit is going to be or what they're trying to get back in expenditures?
If there is a lawsuit, the city is on the hook for it. Okay.
Why, why is that?
It's part of the agreement.
That was part of the negotiation.
It, it, it's a good question, one that I have been up nights thinking about. But it, it, the way the agreement was structured and the way that the contract negotiations have been going on, it appears that this takes all of that into consideration. I've been in conversations with people from Durham, as well as our own attorneys, and their, and their, it appears that the agreement that I had hoped to put on the table for you tonight, but we should have perhaps as early as tomorrow, will include all of that. So there won't be an additional set of damages we'd be liable or exposed to.
I, I thought that in the agreement, I thought that the, the city and, and the board would be, would be responsible for $150,000 each, and then anything in excess of that would go on the board.
No, the first one, if it's an increase in price.
Right.
The first 150 is split, so the city would contribute up to 75. Anything above that is ours. But if there is a lawsuit, not an increase in contract price, then that is the city's problem.
Under the whole no-are.
What we don't know is what the increased cost of the contract is going to be for 2018, 2019, for bus transportation.
We do. That's reflected in these numbers.
So, so we have a contract, a signed contract with Durham.
We don't have, we don't have a signed contract. We have a, we have a contract that is, is waiting to be signed, but that, with the essential agreements.
We haven't seen it to vote on it, so we can't sign a contract we haven't voted on.
I, I was hoping, as I said, to give it to you tonight, but I can't do that until I get it in my hands tonight.
But then how can we spend money if we don't have a contract?
Well, that's why we're doing it contingent. Okay. But the deal is, we have an indication of what the numbers are going to be if the city does what we've been led to believe they're going to do. So that's what we're working on.
It appear, I, I wouldn't say it with the degree of confidence that I'm saying it with, if I didn't think that this was a very likely scenario. I mean, this has really been hammered out and hammered out again. So it's, it's not wishful thinking on my part. It appears that we are, you know, moments away from having the, the signed contract in hand, so that then you can vote on it and market sign it for, for the, for the board.
So if it comes in at less than that 450 in savings?
Then we have, then, then we could revisit it, and we could say we can't do one of these things, or we could only do 50% of it, or that sort of thing. And that's why, that's why my recommendation is to vote.
So we're sticking to this, and if it's not that, we're going to have to come back and re-discuss it. Because what we're agreeing on is, are these items and leftover money to make further considerations.
Right, right. Contingent on the contract.
But can we put that in, that making further consideration, you know, of main, or primarily to focus on the preschool, you know, grandfathering preschool, something so that, because I think these parents are so upset, they don't know what's going on. And I think if they know we were working on it, I think it would give them a little bit of ease.
I personally, I would support grandfathering existing preschool students, as long as there is enough additional money available to cover that one item.
Yeah, I really want to go back and look at all the things that we cut and prioritize before we start making promises to anybody. I would hate to say to preschool kids, hey, yeah, give them this hope that it's going to all come back and not to worry about it, and then we decide it took on another way.
The problem is, we have $2.4 million worth of cuts. They're all worthwhile.
That's what I mean.
They're all, they're all worth it.
This leftover $193,000, that, that's going to go, like that.
How many kids are we talking?
In the preschool?
Yeah.
Probably a couple dozen.
Yeah, it's not that many.
So it's not, it's not that big a ticket item?
No.
But it's, but to Nandi's point, and but to several of the people around the table's point, I mean, $193,000.
It's nothing.
Doesn't go.
It doesn't.
Couple of teachers.
Right. That's what I mean, we got to look at that.
Yeah. Well, I think our staffing is okay, correct?
I was just going to ask about class size.
Our, we, we were able to keep class sizes, I think, at a reasonable level. Again, people, we haven't had our annual August registration, which will happen next week, and we will see, I've been, I say that in that way because we have been receiving people at the door every day here, when they come in here to say, so we're ready. And so we say, come back next week and we'll take care of it. But in any event.
Do they come here or to the school?
They should go to the schools, but many times, people don't know where to go, so they come here.
Yeah, and that's just, I mean, just to that point. Should we get a big influx and recognize that we do need additional staff? Preschool's going to have to go second priority to that. You know what I mean? Like, I, I just don't want to make any sort of false promises or false hope when, when we, when we just don't know yet.
I agree with you to that point, Nandi, but I also think that, I've, I've been involved with the preschool program. I've been there. I see the, I see the benefits of it.
Absolutely.
And I'm not saying that, that teachers aren't, I think teachers are important too, but I do think this preschool program is important. Now, as I said, if we have to phase it out, then we can phase it out, but at least give these parents the opportunity to know that it's not going to be any longer. I mean, you know, and preschool is important. Preschool is very important. There's a lot, I mean, I don't know how many, I don't, I don't have any children, but I'm sure all of you that did have children probably sent them to some form of preschool and found it very valuable.
Paid a ton of money for it.
Well, we should have sent them to.
And most districts do charge, as you know. But, but I, but I think that we have the capacity next week at Finance, hopefully, to have the information in hand, and then we could discuss that, as well as other issues of concern, and come up with a plan.
And actually, what we can do is, as soon as we know that there is a signed contract or a signable contract, then I can schedule a special after Finance.
Okay.
To address that. Okay.
I just wanted to be clear that, you know, I, I think, I think it's very important. It should be also a priority. And I, I think especially because we, two months' notice is not enough notice.
When we, when we come back to this next week at Finance, I would love to have in front of us a list of everything that we did cut again.
Yeah.
And what their line item was, so that we can.
Absolutely, no problem.
And maybe even one of those interactive things like we've done before, where we move things around and change. And how many, how many children are in the preschool program?
Yep.
That would.
Okay, so would you like the motion to be read from the paper?
Yeah, I would do. Yeah, I would say so, and tweak it as necessary, based on what we discussed.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion that contingent upon negotiations with Durham Transportation, panning out to show $450,713 in net savings to the district, we will restore programs and services as delineated in the document. Do you want me to analyze what they are?
You should.
Okay. Move or reduce, this is right from the document there, Diane. Move to reduce transportation line item by $451,000 and authorize the chair to sign a revised one-year contract with Durham for the 2018, 2019 school year. Move to add back Talented and Gifted transportation on utilizing funding from the Magnet School Transportation Grant and mandate a prorated $800 annual transportation fee based on 180-day school year per student, and move to eliminate the proposed $250,000 in pay to participate fees for the 2018, 2019 school year.
Okay.
Can we add?
Well, that will be next.
And I think it's on the record now?
It's on the record. We really can't address the other one because it wasn't on the agenda.
Okay, right.
Okay.
But it's, it's out there that we're looking at it, right, that varies medium.
Just to clarify, that prorated $800 that we're going to mandate, that would be $800 per student that is now taking that transportation, right?
It's, it's, yes. In other words, these are, these are, this is transportation we are not mandated to provide, but we're trying to go meet the families halfway.
But last year, they paid zero.
Right.
But we were eliminating transportation completely.
And we were going to eliminate.
I understand.
And they were like, I'm working, how am I going to get my kid there?
Will, will that, will, will the parents of these students be allowed to make a payment plan, like $100 a month or whatever?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, because, I mean, $800 to come up with.
So if this, if, if we approve this, we just approved the contract with Durham. We, we authorize the chair to sign it.
If it meets.
Without voting on it and seeing it.
If it meets the $451,000 savings, yes.
It's a pretty thin contract because it's a one-year contract, and it's, we have reason to believe that these will be the numbers, and that, and to Mark's point, we'd have to meet that criteria.
Okay. Any, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Sensing we are ready to vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
No.
She said it.
She said it. Okay.
Aye, yeah.
Okay. Let's do a roll call on that one.
Okay. Mrs. Kilmartin?
Aye.
Mr. DiWello?
No.
Mrs. Kuta?
Yes.
Mr. Manotti?
Yes.
Mr. Holden?
Yes.
Mrs. Yolesh?
Yes, as long as everybody knows what I'm doing. Got it.
Yeah.
Did we get in?
Yeah.
Mrs. Gatos?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All righty. The motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Discussion of bullying.
Okay. So bullying, of course, is something that is a perennial issue of concern for students, for teachers, for parents, and for board members, and everyone else in the community. Tonight, I've asked one of our principals, all of them are quite capable of talking about this subject, but, but Mrs. Williams has a very good infrastructure and plan in place at PHS, and she's agreed to come tonight to have a roundtable discussion highlighting the kinds of work that she and her team do at Perry Hill School, and then to have a question and answer with the board members. Thank you for coming tonight. Please, please do, and thank you for coming tonight.
If you could aim the microphone towards you a little bit. That way, you'll be on the video.
So, as Chris said, I'm the Rain Williams, and I'm the principal of Perry Hill School. We're going to be starting our ninth year, so I've been at Perry Hill School for eight years. Before that, I was at Mopegan for five years, and I was a teacher at Lafayette for 20 years. So I've dealt with bullying and mean behavior as a teacher and as an administrator, and it's certainly one of the most important things to me. It's, it's really important that our children are emotionally safe at school and that they're not picked on, and that we really meet their, their needs. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to just talk for a few minutes about how we handle bullying and mean behavior at Perry Hill. Again, it's our goal to have every child in a safe, secure environment. What I'm going to do is going to define bullying, define bullying, right from the policy. I'm going to talk about some proactive strategies that we do. I'm going to talk about our process for incidents, and it's similar at all the schools, a little bit different. We're all PBS trained, so we all have kind of the same referral forms, though they're, they're a little bit different school to school. And then I'm going to just give you an example of a verified bullying case that, that I've encountered during my tenure as principal. So what we do is, we talk to kids on a regular basis about the way that they treat others. We use the word "mean" because we want all mean behavior to stop, not just reported bullying, but we want kids to be nice to each other. So we, we really use the word "mean" when we're doing our instruction with our students. The definition of bullying is overt actions directed against another student with the intent to ridicule, harass, humiliate, or intimidate another student, which are committed more than once during the school year. And some examples of bullying could be a physical attack, verbal taunts, threats, intimidation, stalling, exclusion from peer groups. Those are all parts of, part of the definition for bullying. There are times that we receive reports of these things, not bullying, but they're one-time occurrences. And we take them very seriously. We investigate everything, and we certainly give out appropriate consequences. Some consequences could be detention or suspension. And we always set up meetings with our counselor, and school resource, and meetings with our school resource officer are often also set up. Again, as a school, we do a lot to set up a positive environment. We work with students, school climate and school culture, so that all students feel safe, and this is a top priority. We want students to not only feel safe, but to find their niche or their thing, so that they have a good experience at our schools. Through school-wide activities and lessons, we work to educate all of our students. Lessons are conducted by classroom teachers and school counselors, and we work to continuously educate and discuss mean behavior and bullying with our students. At Perry Hill, we have set days once a month that we focus on it, but teachers certainly do it at other times during the month as well. Some ways that we are proactive is, the district follows the principles of PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports, and that's a proactive approach to establishing the behavioral supports and social-cultural needed for all students, I believe in the definition, in the school to achieve social, emotional, and academic success. And through this approach, we teach our students to be respectful through lessons, modeling, and and reteaching. And consequences are also part of it. There's consequences to the teachers, and then consequences that come to administrators as well. It's important, again, that you know that we spend a lot of time on classroom lessons and scheduling programs. We refer to it as mean behavior again, and we try to teach the students again how wrong it is. Counselors and teachers do multi-trutative lessons. Each of our teachers has a handbook. We also have lessons online in a shared folder that teachers can use and refer to. We do a bullying awareness week where we focus on stopping mean behavior. We've held a poster and essay contest over the years. We use literature and videos to teach, and we have student leaders that take an active role to end and to stop mean behavior at school. This year, we had... Our theme was positivity, and we had a school-wide assembly where our student leaders actually ran it, and we really focused on being positive and making everyone feel safe emotionally at our school. Unity Day is one of the days that the whole district, I believe, takes part in its Unite Against Mean Behavior. This past year, it was on October 25th, and students took a pledge against bullying and yelled orange, and it was a day that we really focused on making sure that students knew what mean behavior and bullying was and pledged to stop it. Having said that, again, that's certainly how we do business. We're positive. We do teaching, we do instruction, but things happen. You know, things certainly happen, and when they do, we deal with them, and we deal with them appropriately. Referrals can go one of two ways. The first are things that the teacher handles. So they might be some name-calling, there might be just something that the teacher feels that they can handle it on their own. We have a log system through PBIS, and they record it on the Level 1 log. It always includes a reflection and contact with the parents. So they're always... The parents are always informed when this happens. Possible log consequences, loss of privileges, a timeout, seat change. We have a reteaching club, which our school resource officer also goes to, and our behavior teacher runs. Again, it's all about reteaching the proper behavior. They have to miss their club, which they hate, so that's an effective consequence when it's at that level. When things are more serious, we have a Level 2, 3 referral form, and those things come to me or my assistant principal, and a full investigation is conducted when we get them. And if the incident has deemed to have happened, we give a consequence. Could be missing an activity, it could be a lunch detention, it could be an after-school detention, or in serious cases, an in-school suspension or an out-of-school suspension, and we certainly give all of those consequences when we need to. All incidences are taken seriously. Besides the consequence, students meet with the counselor on a regular basis, and again, often the student resource officer is involved with talking, especially in their in-school suspension. In in-school suspension, he will go, and he will meet with them, and he will talk about the incidents and help give them other ways that things could have been handled. Parents are always notified. Most of the time, it's a face-to-face meeting. Occasionally, it will be a phone meeting if we're not able to get a face-to-face meeting, but I would say nine out of 10 times, it's a face-to-face meeting with a parent. And then after the consequence is given, we continue to monitor the students, both the person that the mean behavior was done to or... And the person that did the mean behavior. Our counselors check in with them, our teachers check in with them. They were in contact with parents, so we really work hard to make sure that it is a one-time incident and it doesn't happen again. And most of the time, they are one-time incidents. This year, we had 15 Level 3 incidences, which is a suspension-level incident. We had 24 Level 2 incidences, which is detention or other consequences from myself and my assistant principal. And then the teachers, you know, they had many more than that, you know, with their log and their Level 1, things that they handled. But everything we do, we record it, we keep track of it, we monitor it, we follow it. If a student does a behavior more than once, we do do a full bullying investigation, and we speak to all parties and witnesses. If it's verified, we also send the report to central office, and we certainly take these incidents seriously. And I went back to my files while I was thinking about what I was going to say tonight, and we have had verified bullying incidences in the last... You know, at least, you know, one or more the last five years. So we certainly have had, you know, the verified bullying incidents. And I'll give you an example of one case. Later student called, another student, several names. He told fat jokes about the student, he stole or took some of the student's materials, and he ridiculed the student. When reported, it was found that this happened, obviously, on four different occasions, and bullying was verified in that case. So we did, you know, we verified bullying. Actions that were put in place in that case were an in-school suspension, the counselor spoke with the student, the resource officer spoke with the student, the students were separated, and then increased supervision was set up so that we, you know, we made sure that they weren't together, we made everybody that dealt with the students aware of the case, and then we continued to, you know, supervise regularly. I have to say that, you know, we've been able to, you know, by doing these things, you know, stop the incidents. So it's been good. Our teachers are also trained each year, beginning of the year, on the bullying laws and the procedures that need to be followed, and they are also reminded of what signs to look at if a student suddenly becomes withdrawn, if they're, you know, don't want to play at recess. They're reminded of those signs too, so that they can talk to the counselor, and if there is something happening, we can figure out what it is if it's not being reported. It's really important to us. And I just want to say again, we truly care about every student. We have a system set up where we handle all reported incidents, and it's our job and our goal to keep everyone emotionally safe, and we certainly take care of every reported incident.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Okay.
Is that right?
Yeah, quick thing, just as a reminder in the discussion, we don't want to mention any specific incidents or names that could lead to identification of anybody. Okay.
I have two questions.
Kathy, go first.
Okay. Lorraine, are the parents called even after, like, say, the first offense, or do you give them like...
Yeah, every time.
Every time, so right from the very beginning?
Even at the teacher level.
Even, okay. And the second, does the counselor take, like, groups of kids? See, I mean, there's some kids that maybe need that special little encouragement or whatever, because they might resort to mean behavior.
Yeah, they have friend, social groups, they, you know, they have all kinds of...
Do they still have those?
Yes, they do at our level as well.
Okay.
You know how they had them at the elementary? They continue to have them.
Now, if this happens on the bus, it's handled by the school as well?
Yes, even online.
Even online?
Yeah. If it comes to the school.
Okay.
Anything that comes to the school, we handle.
Okay. Thank you.
When you say separating the children, do you ever... I know you have, like, dyads. Do you move someone to a new dyad to separate them?
Occasionally, if we... If the bullying, if it's a verified bullying.
Okay. And I'm thinking, maybe those groups are essential. If there is one child being targeted by several different, like, one time, like a scapegoat, I mean, I was one myself, and it was like this person this time, and that person another time. How is that dealt with? Because it has to be repeated.
We look at that, and we see if it's related. We certainly take a look at it. And there have been times that things have been done in groups, and we've handled that as well.
Like, what's going on here? Why are you guys all just ganging up on this person?
Yeah. We haven't had anything that's been, like, timeline together. It's been...
Right.
Been the same time, it's been over.
One in November, one in March, one in April, yeah.
I have a...
Yeah.
Board policy 5131.911A has a specific form that is to be completed. How many of those forms were completed last year?
I think three, two or three.
The policy doesn't differentiate. Once it's reported, the form requires it to be filled out and investigated, not a Level 1, Level 2, Level 3.
If it's reported, it depends how it's reported. If it's reported as bullying or if it's reported to me as an incident. That would be a difference.
Well, if there's a report of bullying, whether it's anonymous, whether it's a teacher, whether it's a parent, the policy requires it to be investigated and the form to be completed and followed up, and the parents to be notified. So you had three where the board's policy was complied with?
If it was anything that was reported as bullying, it was filled out that way.
So you had three incidents last year?
That were reported as bullying.
But sometimes it gets reported as my kid is being picked on.
That's how most of my reports.
Yeah, they don't use that key word "bullying." You don't go to the form yet. Because I know we have similes.
That's exactly.
It's all in the terminology that it...
So it's all in interpretation of who's ever taken the report, and they don't ask the question, "Do you think this is bullying?" And they say, "Well, I'm picking on, I don't know..."
No, we do an investigation.
Well, so you do an investigation, but you don't document it on the policy form?
If it's bullying, bullying, that bullying report we do.
Yeah, a factor here, of course, is that Mrs. Williams and other members of her team, and every school, this will be the case, bring a substantial amount of expertise to these. So it's not a whimsical interpretation. It's based on fact patterns and experience, so that they know the difference. And again, in each case, it can be different, but there's a difference between the pattern that constitutes bullying and mean behavior. And so those of you who have raised children, those of you who have worked as teachers, have seen some of these things in groups of kids over time, and there's a difference between an unfortunate comment and bullying, and I trust that Ms. Williams and the other principals know what that is and act accordingly.
Well, sometimes in the school, I found, and I'm sure Kate, you've probably witnessed the same thing, where the word "bully" is used too often, and it really isn't...
That's why we try to use the word "mean behavior."
Right. It's mean behavior. I mean, you know, if somebody gave... I mean, I can remember a kid telling me that he was being bullied, and I said, "What happened?" And he said, "Well, they made faces at me." Well, making faces, I mean, you know, I don't really know if that was...
And then you got the kid who doesn't, like, "Oh, I was just fun with him. I didn't mean anything."
Right. He's my friend.
Well, that happens a lot.
That does happen a lot.
So how do you know whether or not the things that you're doing are successful?
Our basics, the thing that, you know, if it doesn't happen again, you know, and the kids are okay.
So if an incident is reported, so the teachers and the experts, the administrators who have been trained on what bullying is opposed to just something that, you know, Mrs. Yolish just mentioned, it's... Sometimes it's all the same to the kid, and if that's not being documented, how do you track whether or not it continues to happen?
Well, we document everything. We have...
It's in the PBIS log, I mean?
Yeah, I have... Or Level 2 and Level 3 are all incident reports.
So there were, I believe, 39 between the two Level 2 and 3. So you have files on those, and we could go and look at and determine whether or not you comply with the board's policy.
You could not do that. That would be outside of the scope of a board member's role.
Chris could do that.
But the board is responsible for this policy, and how are we supposed to determine the policies being complied with if we can't look at the files?
Well, you can't look at the files, so you can do what we're doing now, is to have a discussion about how we handle things and how we... And you're hearing tonight, perhaps for the first time, some of you that haven't been involved in education for a long time, exactly the level of detail that goes into this, the meetings, the calls to parents, the different levels of forms, all that kind of stuff. And I think the most important thing of all is that when you look at a school, you could say this about a lot of our schools, but we're going to talk about Perry Hill for the moment, a very life-affirming place where kids make choices that are involved in things, and you can go in and see the level of engagement that students have, and then you pay attention to the students that become part of a file, if you will. You pay special attention to those students to make sure.
So the three that you have files on where the board's form was complied with and filled out, have those been resolved, and the bullying has now stopped?
Yes.
And how do you ensure... How do you hold teachers accountable for documenting and the behaviors that they hear about?
You know, we do training on it. We actually collect their logs, we look at them, we collect the data, we look at where things are happening.
If there's ever, like, a time when a parent is saying, "This has happened over and over again," and there's only maybe one instance documented, is that ever looked at?
Yeah, we investigate it. Sure, absolutely.
I know personally, myself, anytime a parent comes to me and uses that word, I go right to the administrator because I know they have, what is it, 24 hours to conduct an investigation?
Since you've been in this, doing this for so long, I'm curious what you think about consequences as behavior modifiers, and wondering what sorts of things you do to... Rather than just punishing poor behavior, what sort of things are in place to encourage positive, kind behavior?
Well, what we do is we have... The counselor actually can... Will set up a whole program with somebody, especially somebody who's in in-school suspension. So they'll come up with... They'll do check-ins with them, they'll kind of make them accountable, they'll do some restorative discipline, they'll kind of, you know, they kind of take them under their wing and really work with the students. When you get in-school suspension, you're not left alone. You know, we follow you, we work to... And I have to say, we've been pretty successful, especially this year. I think I had one student that had in-school suspension twice.
Can you give me an example, just because I don't know? Can you give me an example of, like, for instance, on what some sort of restorative interaction might be?
Sure. So what our counselor will do is she will kind of get what she calls is get them back into the system. So she'll go over, she'll review the whole, whatever happened, whatever the incident was, and then she'll work to get the student to feel good about themselves again, because most of the times, they don't feel good about themselves.
So you're talking about the student that's been victimized, not the student that's been doing the...
The student that's been doing the bullying.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Bullies don't feel good about themselves.
Just to be clear, yeah.
Yeah, no, I am. I mean, obviously, also the one that's been victimized.
Sure, sure.
We certainly do things with the counselor, but we do it with the student that's been in the incident.
Find those underlying components.
Yeah.
So you're aware of every incident, and the teachers send that information on to you, or you look at their logs. So if... And I'm drawing back to an expulsion hearing that we had in which a parent said they had filed a claim of bullying and the principal had no knowledge of it whatsoever. You would know every incident within the school.
Yeah, but I wouldn't know it all by heart. I'd be able to look it up.
I think in that particular expulsion hearing, the claim of bullying was manufactured and not real.
Depends on...
Well, we had no documentation to prove one way or the other.
Well, we don't document lack of bullying. You know, so-and-so was not bullied today.
But, you know, somebody could just perceive that as bullying, as I said, and it...
Yeah. A question that I've got is, when you contact parents about bullying, do you find that they're generally cooperative?
I would say most of the time, certainly not all of the time, but most of the time. They're... The last couple of years, we really have all been. But four or five years ago, I had one, and, you know, it was really hard to make that parent understand that their child was bullying. It was very difficult.
Yeah.
I had to tie the resource officer into some meetings. There's myself, there's my assistant. They kept saying it wasn't happening, you know, eyewitnesses, I had the whole investigation. So, yeah, it has happened. Not the last couple of years, but it has happened.
And I know the one thing, for those that aren't in education, that I'm aware of is parents will say to you of the bullied child, "Well, what was done, what was done? Their consequences were done." You can't... You don't tell them they were suspended or anything like that. It was investigated, and the person has been, I don't know what your...
I just say a serious consequence was given.
Dealt with, yeah. But it's very confidential as far as...
Yeah. I have a couple more. Is that okay?
Sure.
You mentioned that student leaders and teachers are involved. To what extent? What mechanisms are in place for you to be able to get their feedback in terms of the kinds of processes and programs that are in place to deal with mean behavior?
Our counselors do a lot of surveys. You know, they certainly do. They ask their opinions. They have students that fill out surveys. We also have, you know, we get, you know, total information from teachers.
But there's no formal, like, mechanism in place to collect feedback from students But there's no formal, like, mechanism in place to collect feedback from students or from teachers to really, to really gauge some sort of, like, qualitative data whether or not the things that you're doing are really making a difference in these kids' lives? If they feel it, if they see it, if it's, if they think that things are improving?
Not other than, you know, we, we do check in with them and we ask them and, you know, and if they tell us no, we certainly, you know, we'll do what we need to do.
Um, and then my last question is, if you had all powers, a magic wand, to just do one more thing, you gotta, you know, to put one thing on your wish list and your wish would be granted in order to make it a better situation in your school, what would it be?
Does it have a price tag?
Nope. Nope, anything.
You know, maybe more counselors, maybe more, you know, yeah.
We keep saying that.
More resources available to.
You can, you can never have enough counselors nowadays.
We have a lot of kids in need, we have a lot of kids in crisis and, you know, we, we have to find the time to make it happen.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Lorraine, good job.
Very helpful, enlightening.
I like her points.
Alrighty, next item on our agenda is an executive session to discuss security. This time I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Single, second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?